Okay, at this time I'll call the Dixon County Commission's regular meeting to order. This is for May 29th, 2014. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only item we have to add to the agenda is we are going to hear an audit report and information from Potberg, Gassman, Hoffman, and we'll put that in after the consent agenda. And I'd move that we approve that amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the May 22nd work session and regular meeting. It also includes the fund expenditures of $153,000 or $153,272.62. And then also abatements of $177.90.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So at this time, we'll go ahead and have our audit report.
Good morning. Officially, good morning.
It is.
We have delayed getting an engagement letter to you until we could look through the federal awards and the general ledger to have an idea of what exactly the audit was going to encompass this year. As you remember, last year we had to come back to you in August and redo things because a single audit was triggered. We knew this year would be a single audit, but we were unsure of which of the federal awards might become major programs, what that testing would entail, et cetera. And rather than come back and have to amend our proposal as far as what our fees would be, we wanted to do it all in one fell swoop. So at this point, we have reviewed all of the 2013 minutes and read 2014 minutes through, I think about February. We hadn't gotten clear through today's date. So if there is something that's happened between February and now that you think might affect anything that happened in 2013, why we ask you to please bring that to our attention. This meeting is basically a risk assessment discussion so that we know what you want us to concentrate on in the audit. And we will tell you what we have seen in the general ledger that we've looked at so far and what we've read in your minutes as far as what meeting we need to concentrate on with the audit. It is also required that we have a fraud discussion. We need to know about any actual alleged suspected fraud that might have taken place and any material errors that we know about at this point, of which one's been brought to our attention and to your attention. We didn't see it in the minutes, but we have a copy of a report that was issued from our office to you about the TIF funds. And we believe that now that that has a dollar number amount to it and has been discussed that you feel it needs to be a footnote, at least to your audit, of the fact that that exists. Are there any particular things that you are concerned about, departments, anything that's happened with patrons of the county, any of your vendors, anything like that that you feel might be fraudulent in nature, or any allegations that have been made by anyone either inside or outside that would be under that fraud category that you think we need to know about at this point?
I have not heard any comments or know of anything that would raise any suspicions on my part of any activity.
Yeah, same here.
Thank you. That's what I like to hear, right? Okay. So as far as risk is concerned, again, areas that you would like us to pay special attention to, but areas that then after you give me that feedback, I'm going to let you know what we've seen already and where we think we need to spend some additional time looking at things. But at this point, other than the fact that you have federal dollars that trigger a single audit, we're at over a million at this point as far as what's been identified as expenditures of federal dollars. Other than that and what that encompasses, is there anything else that you would like us to spend time and attention on as far as what we audit? Whether it be a trail of certain dollars coming through, whether it be a department, whether there might be some risk because you have a new elected official, a new department head, anything like that, changes in computer systems that might make their bookkeeping different that we need to spend, pay special attention to in the audit?
I guess on that federal audit, you do track all the expenses that goes into those projects so that that is clear, the amount of dollars that we accept and the amount of dollars that are actually paid out, that that does balance. Do you look at it that way, or?
Yes.
You do?
Now, we do not test every individual expenditure. We use the same methods that we use with your regular audit as far as looking at all the material amounts. In other words, the big dollars or those that we think have a risk to them, which would be like a reimbursement to an individual person rather than, you know, to a vendor kind of thing where we can look at an invoice, those kinds of things. But we will determine the major programs. Last year, remember, we had three. At this point, we know that the USDA portion of the sewer district number three will be a major program because it is over $300,000 of expenditures all by itself. We will have to look because of the risk assessment that we've done and the fact we had findings last year, we have to look at 50% of your federal dollars. So we have to look at over $500,000 of expenses, test the internal controls over that, read what that grant requires, and then test those controls. So you may have the possibility of findings in your audit of the controls over those grant dollars. Did you dot all the i's and cross all the t's? Whether the dollar amounts are wrong or not, did you follow the procedures that are required for that grant? So all of those kinds of things that we did last year, and we know for sure it'll be the USDA on the sewer project, there, and there may be additions to that. If we can add the CDBG grant, that $167,000, that's also a part of that sewer project, and that be all that we have to show as major programs, we will absolutely do that. But as you remember, last year, we knew there were a lot of issues with health department internal controls. Not anything about dollars missing, but as far as how they were keeping track of things, we kind of set that aside last year. I cannot set it aside again this year. So we may not have to make any of their programs a major program, but we will probably end up selecting some transactions that occurred in that department. And so therefore, we will touch on those internal controls. So there is more than likely some issues that would probably be brought up there. I know that that is an evolving department and they're getting better every day, but what we have to look at is what happened in 2013. So something that happened in January that isn't even a process anymore might rise to the surface and might have to be reported.
Well, hopefully, we are solving some of those problems with new computer program there at the health department.
Yeah, which goes into effect here in '14, so.
So I hope that will help that.
Yes, and we hope so.
And the inventory, I know that seems like it's always been an area where we struggle and with CIC, we're kind of doing our inventory. Are we doing better at that now, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
I hope so. I'm sure you made some good progress last year with getting the system and getting everything barcoded and tracked. So now it's just going to be a matter of identifying what the new items are that are coming in and then also the items that are deleted to show that there is a flow, like it was sold, here's the money, it's in this fund. It'll be a lot easier to identify.
Right.
What I have done is three prom in looking at things. You remember last year that we set up an engagement to do before we actually started the audit because we knew that things were going to be different with the new computer system? As we have looked at our preliminary things to do our risk assessment and discussion about fraud today, we have found many additional changes that have happened on top of what we did for the 2012 audit. Basically, there were 674 new accounts in distributing revenue that were set up by the treasurer's office in funds that are coming from the state that they set up new line items for. We had to add those to our system.
674 additional ones?
Yes, by the time you break those out for every single department, the allocation of that revenue to every department in the general fund and all the other funds. There were 132 new accounts created when you allocated employee benefits to each department and to each fund. So between that, your budget amendments that were done, and how each account is now tagged to a budget line item between personnel services, benefits, contractual, et cetera. When those accounts were added, when we use your general ledger, your budget inside your general ledger no longer matches the budget that was approved. The bottom line for each department and each fund is the same, but the breakout between personnel services, benefits, contractual, et cetera, are different. Your budget that's reported in our audit report has to match the approved budget. So we've already looked at an entire day of journal entries to do to get those to line up right on our side. You do not have to do the adjustments on your side, thank goodness, but we have to do them on our side because your budget's got to be the budget that was approved and not where those line items got moved to. It's perfectly fine for those line items to not be equal to your budget inside of each one of those departments. So there's no budget violations caused, but we have to have those numbers match what was originally approved. So consequently, one of the engagement letters I want to give you is for pre-audit work. We have almost $6,000 in just getting the financial statements to a beginning point before we can start the audit. So that's prom one. The next step is.
Challenge one.
Challenge one. The next step is the single audit and what's going to be required with it. And because we know we're going to hit some of the health department things, because we know that we're going to look at that CDBG grant, as we told you last year, we made about 60 cents on the dollar from the audit last year. And we are willing to still give you a discount, but maybe not one that cuts quite so deep. So my, last year, the single audit price was $12,000. I'd like to increase that to $13,500 this year. Now we get to the basic audit. It has been at $29,000 for three years. I went back and looked. Last year, I told you it was 60 cents on the dollar. The year before that, it was 58 cents on the dollar. I would like to propose an increase that would get us to 75 cents on the dollar. I don't know any other professionals that would come to you with a bid like that to start out with and say, hey, we're an engineering firm, something like that. We're willing to discount your fees upfront to 75 cents on the dollar. That is a $5,000 increase to your base audit fee from $29,000 to $34,000. We are still reconciling grant dollars right now. We're looking at, as I told you, over a million. The confirmation from the state of Kansas for health department dollars is less, excuse me, the state has said they've sent you more revenue that appears on your general ledger. So we know that we've got monies out there that are allocated to the wrong accounts. And so we know that that's going to be an issue right away because we will take those confirmations and we want all those line items to match with those confirmations we have. So we know we have that ahead of us as well. Then we have the TIF discrepancy, and as I said, we're going to need to do some footnotes on that. We did not see anything in your minutes in January and February. I think that that report that was put together from our office was delivered to you in January. I don't know if that was just in a study session that that was discussed, but we haven't seen anything in the minutes we've read so far that a conclusion has come to about how that was presented to the city of Solomon, if there's any resolution at this point, if we show that as contingent amount.
It's just ongoing, so we're waiting for that.
Okay. So as of the date of your audit report, which I'm going to assume is going to be maybe around the first of September or so, as of the date of that report when we're done with our field, whatever the resolution is at that point, that's a big enough sum of money that's owed to you that we'll need to put something in there. So I don't need details of where you're at today, but I'm going to have to have details as of the date of that audit, whether they have paid any of that back so far, even if it's in 2014, or what the payment plan is, or however that is, however that's been resolved.
We'll accomplish that, so.
So that'll be a new item that'll be added to that. Questions, concerns?
I appreciate you're so thorough and, I mean, it's kind of nice to go through and checklist those things off on the progress we've made, but on kind of what we need to do, so I appreciate your expertise.
Well, we thank you. We enjoy working with your staff and hope that these will meet, our engagement letters will meet with your approval and.
The money we get for the fishing, wildlife, and games, is that part of the federal money or is that different?
Nope, that's federal money.
It certainly might be. I assumed it was, but.
Yes.
For the bridges?
Yeah.
Now, what you have spent so far is very small.
Right.
In '13.
Oh, right.
But it'll be there in '14. But again, for 2014, the single audit threshold is still $500,000, so of expenditures. So again, we're stringing the house. For instance, your COPS grant, you spent some of the money in '12, you spent some of it in '13, you're going to spend some of it in '14, and I think it goes through June of '15. So we have to keep track of that original award and string that out because the whole report's based on your expenditures. And that's why we're.
And I, you know, and I guess I'm, you know, you think of all the money we get, federal money for it, it's a wide variety of programs.
Well, and the other thing Janelle's going to check on for us is if there was any awards through the federal sharing program from drug money or that kind of thing. Because again, those are federal dollars and you don't necessarily think about it. But again, the way this process works, it's where you spend it, when you spend it. So you may have gotten some money in '13, but they didn't spend any of it. We have to remember that when we audit '14, that now we have to record that money even though it came in at a different period of time. So at this point, I don't think you are expecting 2014 to be a single audit.
Shouldn't even come close to it.
So now, you know, you get.
We don't know of a big project possibly to happen.
But if there were to be some big drug busts on the interstate and you guys would get a piece of that, you know, then you have to look at that. But you'd have to spend it before I'd have to audit that. When 2015 comes around, the single audit threshold has been increased to $750,000. So a lot of things that have gotten triggered and hit you at that $500,000 mark, it's going to take a big jump to get you over that next threshold. So hopefully, and I shouldn't say hopefully, because if you get a big project and you get a chance to get a million bucks from the federal government to do something, I want you to take it. Okay, I don't want you to worry about the audit piece. I want you to take that money because you can do so many good things for your community, for your county with those dollars. But there is a cost to that. But it's a small percentage compared to the dollars that you get and to the good you can do with those federal dollars. Anything else?
That covers it.
I believe these engagement letters.
Randy, we need to.
You could deal with them today if you weren't, put them on the agenda for next week.
Oh, I think since they're here, we just need a motion to go ahead and authorize signatures for these engagement letters with Potberg, Gassman, and Hoffman. I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to go ahead and authorize signatures on this. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You want to wait long enough just to get these here?
I will be glad to do that, and then we will continue working since we kind of started anyway because we needed you to do those things. But now you've officially authorized us and authorized your staff to share information with us, so we appreciate that. And we will, we will let you know if anything large happens and, as I said to you last year, we don't surprise you at the end of your audit report. If there's something large that comes to our attention, we will let you know immediately. So, but at this point, you kind of know the things that we're looking at and we know we're there, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think Barb's just filling in a few blanks here. And I've got the signature on here, so I think we're all set. Oh, and you even have the invoice here. That's handy.
Does that end, these three items add up to what?
I think that's separate. This is just.
That's the second letter that just says we'll charge an hourly fee for whatever it takes to get the books right at the starting point. So if you add the total of all three, the 34 plus the 13,5 plus the 58.
58, 15, okay.
And this probably the last time we'll have.
Those preliminary stuff, I sure hope so.
And is that, is that because we put insurance into each department, or is that?
That's part of it. That's 132 of the new accounts. The 600 accounts are the additional revenue ones. The only thing that might be different is, is I know that you're considering adding a couple of departments. But if they all get set up correctly and the budget matches, it shouldn't be a large cost.
A new department if we hadn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're discussing that during the budget.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I knew something that you didn't do. I shouldn't have said. So, you know, it is always in a state of flux, right? If you don't move forward, you don't, you know, you move backwards, right?
Well, I can see already before we get started with our budget that we've got an interesting time ahead of us.
Yes, we do, always.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner Commissar reports. And Craig, I'll go ahead and start with you.
Yeah, I attended the week tour this morning at Steve Hoover's farm at 7:30. I'd like to thank Steve for putting it on. He's done it several years. Laura did a good job. There was a, I counted people, and there was 40 people there. So it was well-attended, I thought. When I got there, 20 after, I was hoping more people would show up, and I thought it was good crowd. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Martin for getting the dirt down to the Historical Society for ran the schoolhouse. Went down, looked at last picture, looks good. That's all I have.
I did attend a reception for Ellie Carnes, retired postal worker for 24 years and, like I say, very dedicated, and I know all the people really appreciated her postal delivery and a very personal person and, anyway. Also, I did attend, yeah, Carlton, the water board had a special meeting on purchasing the building and so apparently, I shouldn't quote this, but apparently they are looking into that, or maybe already have done it.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and mention the Abilene Area Chambers having an event this evening at Sterling House One, and that's open to chamber members and interested parties. And of course, the county commission is one of the chamber members. And if I get back in town, I plan to attend that. I'll just mention this morning that we did have some discussions regarding the Heritage Center. They have some proposals that they are putting together, and they gave us a timeline of a project that they're considering, and they've hired an architect. And so anyway, Jeff Sheets was in here to give us that information. And then also, we had the county attorney, Daryl Hawkins, and Andrea, his assistant also was in, and so we heard from that project. That's really about all I have on that. Any other comments?
Well, there's a meeting tonight at the Civic Center at 8:00.
Oh, that's right.
Reception, yes.
Reception, tourism. And I'll plan to attend that.
And I plan to attend that also. And there's what, a, like a TV producer or whatever, or doing some, someone doing some film footage in the county and so.
And then the reception is to welcome the film crew in.
Okay. And I guess they want to capture some of the rural flavor of Dickinson County and some wheat, Amber Waves of Grain, and are they going to stay long enough for the harvest, or?
I am not sure. I didn't get that impression when the emails first came out. I thought it was going to be primarily through May and maybe a little bit into June, but maybe their plans have changed. I think you'll find out more tonight.
If they want to look at some wheat that looks like it's harvestable, it's been sprayed with Roundup and it actually looks like it's ready to harvest, only there's probably no grain in it. We got some of that in the south part of the county. If they want to take a picture of wheat that looks like it's ready to harvest.
There you go, yes.
Will there be any indication when harvest will start, even in the state of Kansas? They haven't started down the southern part of it. I know sometimes they have by the end of May.
You know, it all depends on how hot the weather gets and how, this rain actually, you know, every time we get a rain, it delays it. And but, like I say, I imagine it's going to be the normal time around the 20th.
For up here in Dickinson County?
Normally, it's around the 20th, but.
And when I was saying south, I was thinking, you know, down on the Kansas, often the border, sometimes they start end of May or first of June.
Yeah. Yeah, they're at least two weeks ahead of us at least.
Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead and have our report from our county administrator, Brad.
Okay, a little update on the highways, the Old Forty Project, as I reported to you last week, we pretty much got that phase one of that done. This week, it kind of stood down, showing, it stood down, and they're planning on starting here at Abilene going east next week. We've got a couple of issues with the seeding and finishing that they're trying to work out, which may result in some changes, financial changes to the grant on the west side and on the east side. John Groff is working with KODO on that. And with the short wait, they just felt it was better to hold off and not start next week, turn it down next week on that part. I-70 is on schedule. They did close the westbound ramps Tuesday, the westbound ramp here at Abilene. And we're working with, on with KODO, the guys in our foundation of the city, to get signage up for the D-Day celebration coming up there next week. We'll have that prepared and make sure we get good, clear signage to get people off the interstate into Isner Center. Randy has had a meeting with KDHE. During the normal annual meetings regarding the Hope landfill, we discovered that the two test wells at Hope are dry. The water table's apparently lower than 30 feet or so that they are deep, so it remains to be seen that there's a possibility we may be required to drill another test well or two out there so we can get into the water table to retrieve samples. That's what we're required to do, so he's waiting to find out. My question to Randy, of course he couldn't answer it, was if there's no water table up there, why are we worried about the water table? So, you know, how far down do we have to go?
You do have to go.
Yeah, so, that remains to be seen, but that is something in the mix that we may very well have to do, so. We met with Cobb Alley yesterday, and Martin and John and I, and I'll be preparing a letter to send to Schilling just to let them know that we would like to monitor the key road situation for the next month or two. It's our opinion that it would not do either one of us any good to go out right now and fix some of the minor issues that have surfaced. We think it'd be better to wait through the heat and harvest and see exactly what happens and then come back and fix it. And if it does, like we suspect it will, and those issues are going to get worse, then we're fixing at one time. And it'll also help identify where they're at throughout that segment of road, so.
They, there were some people doing some marking on that road, is that Cobb Alley that...
Actually, it's, we've marked, we've marked a few spots with the orange paint, just so we can identify and photograph them, so when we go back in a couple of weeks or a month or whatever, we can photograph them again and look at the comparisons and tell which one.
I had some questions asked, what was going on?
Yeah, Martin and I and John were out there a week or so ago, and we marked several spots and took some pictures and stuff just to start documenting, so we can tell as the progression as time goes what the difference is. Couple of those spots, I think I showed you the pictures of the patches where the gaps were starting, the gaps are continuing to get wider, noticeably wider, so. I guess in being, trying to be a good partner with Schilling and extend the audit brand, so to speak, we don't want them running out and spending a lot of time on something if doing little bits and pieces, if it's going to identify, be able to be identified over the next couple of months, so we need to do it along the segment. So we like to preserve their resources. I know they're busy at this time of year too, but at the same time, we'd like to wait and actually address the whole problem as opposed to little bits and pieces. So, and I think, I think harvest and the heat on the road is going to be a telltale indicator how, what result that provides, so.
I did drive that road again just the other day. There's a couple of patches that's towards the north end of that road that were really rough. The rest of them aren't that rough. I don't know why those were, but there's two places that we were going north on the eastbound lane, and there's a couple of patches that were really rough.
Is it where they milled it off a little bit to try and smooth it out, where you kind of feel it, or...
It seemed like a bump, like they got the pavement higher than the rest of the pavement.
Well, and that may be a couple of those areas that, you know, the one gap is a little over an inch wide now, so, and we may have to have them address something like that pretty quick. I mean, the worst thing we want is something to open up where if a truck goes across up between the axles, it pops up or something, so.
Well, I don't know, it's just something you might want to look at, because I just noticed it in the car, it being rough, so...
Probably pretty bad in the truck.
In the truck, it'd be a whole lot...
Well, we're driving it weekly, we are, and we're working with Cobb Alley. I didn't want to spend a whole lot of money with them at this point, but I think we need a little bit of their expertise in documenting things as we get closer. We just want to let Schilling know that we don't, we will let them know, but more so to find out if they have a contact person they want us to work critically with. When we go out and meet and we try and identify the issues, I think it would do both of us to have one of their people involved with us on that, so that we're not, we want to get away from this week anything, you know?
Well, I agree with you, Brad, there was, you know, rather than having, you know, Chris Patrick come out and fix it now, you know, if you can get ahold of him, you know, if they've got some spare time, you know, if they've got a break in there, where, you know, this is what we'd like to have done, come out and look at it. You know, because they might have, you know, they may not be able to do it all, but they might have a timeframe in there where they could, you know, want to keep their people busy or, you know, availability.
And I think by working with them that way, we're going to get a lot better outcome.
Yeah, no, you can talk...
And it's never been about any problems we've got with Schelling, it's about the product and, and we just want to make sure we do the best we can to make it work, so. Let's see, we do have, the gentleman from Purple Wave is supposed to be here today. We'll get a few dump trucks and the expedition listed again on that, on the auction. I don't know yet, I'll hopefully know something by next week when that will be coming and reporting to you. I provide you a list of the bridges and culverts that were, are scheduled this summer to be worked on as it stands today. On that list, the ones in blue at the top are the ones that are already completed. There is one at seven fifty Flag Road that is a steel structure that will be done later this year. The guys don't like to get out in a hundred-plus degree weather and do those steel structures because it's flat hard on equipment, it's hard on people. So we go, we tend to go in and do the ones that are the corrugated metal pipes, the CPMs that below that, that are a little easier to do and shorter projects. That also coupled with the fact that our guys are, this time of year through the next couple of months, they're pulled off on chip sealing and patching and other projects that can only be done during the summer, and mowing, and that breaks up our crews, so we don't have as many people to do the bigger projects, so. That gives you an idea on the smaller projects, what's going on. I should, hopefully by next week, I'll have a list of the, of our KDOT projects, which I think you're aware of, but nineteen hundred Avenue Bridge, there's the top priority on it, the one on Camp Road, then of course, the one on eighteen hundred Avenue that we've talked about.
Oh, Camp Road's come to the top?
Well, it's like the second line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the one on nineteen hundred Avenue out there is...
Yeah, right. But yeah, I knew that one, but we were up there last year, I'm sure, well, November we were at Camp Road.
Right now, the next one line is the one up on Camp, thirty-five hundred block there, so. And as it stands right now, the nineteen hundred Avenue Bridge is scheduled to be let for bids in December of this year, which typically would equate to probably projects starting with boots on the ground, maybe March, April of two thousand fifteen, so, which would be good, get that one removed and replaced next summer, so. But we, as you can see in the yellow marks, we've got a number, the material we've already purchased and on hand for several of those projects are scheduled this summer. And then the one that they're currently on is the thirty-six thirty Fair Road that they're out working on today, so, as we speak. And that I provided, I put together a resolution for the changes of budget recommended for her election personnel for you to deal with when you get to that. And we're also working on a resolution, I've sent the information to Doug, based, the information Lee I gave you last week about the delinquent aged personal property that's greater than twenty years old that we need to write off, so hopefully we'll have that maybe by next week for you to deal with. Excuse me. That's all I've got today.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to notices and communications, we just have a few here. I think all of us received publication from OCCK, and of course, they're in Salina, but they also have a presence and provide service here in Dickinson County. And I've got an invitation, this is from the CG over at Fort Riley, they're having a combined arms live fire exercise. And I think I'll go ahead and, I plan to attend that on June eleventh. And so I'll go ahead and let you take care of this, because I think there's an RSVP for There's also, and I think they have a Victory Day celebration coming, but I don't know, I've got something at the house on that, but I think that's later in the month in This is to the county commissioners and owners and operators, this is from KDHE, a small arid landfills. And so anyway, it's just inviting us and encouraging us to attend a workshop in Garden City on July second. And I don't know if typically we have someone attend that, but anyway, this, we could review this, and there is time to, if you're interested in attending that July second, we can let Brad know or if there's someone, a department head or staff that should attend that. I'm not sure that's taken care of. And I just have one more letter here. And this also is from KDHE. Now, this, we're just being copied in, it is for Jeff Blix, Blix Landfill, and it's a permit renewal for Blix. And it's for composting tire, mono fill, industrial, construction demolition. And they just are acknowledging that they are in receipt of the permit renewal fee. And so, if that needs to be posted, we can take care of it. Are there any other items that any of the other commissioners are aware of as far as communications or emails or anything that you've received or questions or comments? Moving on, the only resolution we have to consider is a resolution to adjust the pay of election workers, and that's something that we discussed in our work-study session. And just quickly in review, Barb, do you want to make any comments on this, or, this has to do with the election days, the workers?
The workers on election day, the board workers that sit at the polling places, and they have not had any raise since two thousand and six.
Okay.
Actually, we're called, full twelve hours, I bet.
Yeah, and some of them are, depending on...
I was thinking of that for the raise to a hundred dollars, that's still a pretty good deal, we're not making quite a low dollar, a dollar an hour rate, so.
And you know, it's a...
Certainly volunteer service, we appreciate it.
Yeah, an important service that they do provide. Any questions from the commission on this? It's resolution zero five two nine one four.
You was recommending a hundred dollars, from eighty-five up to a hundred.
And we also included they, they're required to come in for...
For training. Like the Friday before election, they have to attend this training, and we just pay them a flat fee of twenty dollars. We don't pay the mileage, we pay the flat fee of twenty dollars to all of you for coming. And they don't get it if they don't attend the training.
I would go ahead and move that we adopt resolution zero five two nine one four before the Board of County Commissioners of Dickinson County. This is regarding the fees for judges and clerks of elections and providing mileage for the supervising judge.
Second.
Have the motion and the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I don't believe we have any other items of business before us.
I do have, I forgot about this.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, KEC's having a fundamental of leadership here at the courthouse Wednesday, June eleventh. I'll be attending, I've already told Chilo, put me down, register me for it, so I just thought I'd bring that up.
Fundamentals of what?
Leadership.
Okay.
They're going to be here at courthouse, the eleventh of June from nine to three thirty.
Okay, I'll probably try to attend, I'll check my calendar, let you know.
Yeah, if you can, let me know, I want to have a registry.
Yeah, I think the registration's open right up till, like, the cancer, something like that. I was looking at it last week and, and like I said, I went to Chilo to register me. That's all I had left, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, that's fine. I'll go ahead and make a motion, a move that we adjourn.
Second.
Have the motion and the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.